Open arms and open heart, Lord God. I read somewhere this week that you, your son said, uh, bathed the feet of Judas, even though he knew that he would betray him. God, I ask you for us to have the same heart, that even though we know in spite of difficult times, that we always turn the other cheek and do what's right for our people. God, I ask you that in this week and every week, that we heal the sick, that feed the homeless, and we take care of everyone that we need to do in Montgomery County. Amen.
Good morning. Schedule attendees today, Sheriff Derek Cunningham, President and CEO Anna Buckaloo with the Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce. Items to be considered, we have recognitions today for the Montgomery Catholic Varsity Football Team. Items to be considered today. Consider unbudgeted position fee requests for Deputy Sheriff Lieutenant. Consider inmate excess medical policy renewal. Consider 2025 transportation alternative set aside program grant application. Consider independent contractor agreement. Consider 2025 revised commission meeting schedule. Consider bid award to Siemens Healthcare Diagnostic Incorporated for drug testing laboratory equipment and supplies. Consider bid awards Transportation South Incorporated for 2025 L.A. West Mercedes Sprinter. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Are there any additions?
Oh, I do, I have something. Let's do, um, you wanna wait on designated or you want me to go and give it to you now so you can go and have it?
Well, I believe that the entity leadership Montgomery like to have it however you'd like to give it.
So I think you all asked us for a donation for leadership Montgomery?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think we're splitting it three ways, right?
Unless other people want to participate.
It's seven hundred and, my leadership Montgomery team is supporting South Lawn Middle School and Strong Tower Foundation. Uh, the total that we are lacking is $752 and this will go towards a goal of $10,000. It was actually finished the goal, $10,000 to provide a computer lab uh, to Strong Tower Foundation.
Is that, so which, you already got that, right?
He's short. You were short how much?
Well, the Commissioners Castanza, Singleton, and Moore Ziegler have already said they would split it, but.
If you want to join in the split.
The total amount is $752.
That's what, we're gonna split?
Yes.
Three ways?
Or five. Yes.
Okay, so total amount you need $750.
Yeah.
Yes.
We could do a hundred and, uh, $250 amount, a hundred twenty-five, a hundred seventy, well, I need a math major.
Uh, look to your lawyer, that's what, that's what you got him for.
Seventeen fifty-two.
Lawyers can't count.
I apologize, it's seventeen fifty-two.
It's seventeen fifty-two.
I'm making this difficult.
Yeah, you are making it difficult.
It's $350 and four and forty cents for each Commissioner.
So, I'll take it. Designated for me and everybody else.
Is this the same class, is this the same class that the Commission spoke to some time ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is your project a little late because everybody else had already?
So we've done several things and I don't.
I'm just curious.
I don't, I don't wanna take up more, uh, more time. We've kinda done several things. One thing is we have partnered with, uh, Strong Tower to, uh, purchase uniforms for, uh, South Lawn Middle School.
You don't have to do that, I'm, I apologize. I was just curious because I know we spoke to the class and I thought everyone had a project already because I know I.
Yes, sir, this is kinda the tail end of one of the three to four things that we've done. And so this will get us to that goal. We're paying buying uniforms, reading to kids, mentoring, and then we're gonna provide a, uh, computer lab.
Take it out of my agency.
Yes, sir.
Carmen, Carmen, can you do it out of your agency to just make it easy on everybody?
Yeah, I can do it out of agency.
Do it out of agency.
Because everybody does outside.
Let's all do agency.
We're gonna have to do that, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna have to do when we get to designated. I think today is the day we, we settle up with all these people.
You wanna, I'm sorry, Commissioners?
You know, you know, we have a list of designated people. Teresa was supposed to get that to you and, and, and we've been putting it off since last year.
Oh, you're talking about designated, yeah.
And once we get to designated.
Oh, when we, okay, when we get there, okay.
We need to do that today.
Yeah, okay, good, that's a good idea. So we're good on agency on this.
Commissioner Sankey, where do you want yours come from?
Because I don't have an agency doing it.
You have $500 left in agency.
I didn't think I did.
Yeah, you got five.
From designated because it may not, that record may not be correct.
Understood. All right, anything else in agency? And thank you, thank you so much, I greatly appreciate it. Miscellaneous appropriations to education.
Oh, uh, I need to do the Johnny Carr tennis team. Doug, did you do, uh, Johnny Carr tennis team recently?
Uh, I don't know, I've done a bunch with Johnny Carr.
They run championship.
Uh, I, I just took him a check the other day, I don't remember what it was for.
Okay, Johnny Carr, uh, the tennis team.
How much?
Seven, uh, seven fifty.
Any other for education?
Uh, yes, we, uh, McIntyre Comprehensive Academy, uh, one thousand. Teachers appreciation, if that's a category.
I just gave him one thou, I gave him a nice check for teachers, they're gonna be bowing over there.
Where's that?
Same place you go.
I guess so, I, you know. We'll just leave it up to them to, to do the right thing. Persil Julian, five thousand for the band.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
Here we are, where's our list?
Where's, uh, where's the list? I don't, I don't have the list today neither. I don't think anybody has a list in.
We're supposed to have a list this, this week. Last week you, we've been putting it off. We have, we have several organizations that were removed from, when we did away with, uh, joint. We said we were gonna do this individually.
Yeah, Samaritan was one, I gave money to them last meeting. Samaritan was one on top of my head, um.
I, I think I'm good for Samaritan in this, I think I'm on there now.
You've already done that. Alabama Dance Theater was one.
Alabama Dance Theater.
Teresa, do we have a list?
And the garden, what's the, um?
Yeah, we, we were supposed to have one for this meeting.
This was Carter's too. Tana Davis, remember she called us about this.
Yeah, boy.
Well, I tell you what, just $5,000, uh, out of mine designated for, uh, Alabama Dance Theater.
Is that happening this time?
I'll, uh, I'll get with Teresa and we'll come up, go back to all the ones that have requested that we have not fulfilled or addressed or something and have that for everybody by the next meeting.
Hey Doug, let me ask you a question, when is the Boys and Girls Club golf tournament?
Uh, their golf tournament, I believe is in May, um.
So do we need to go ahead and say something?
Probably go ahead and do them today, that's one that, that we've done in the past and, uh, so Kendall, there's a total of, uh, five for the golf tournament and five for the, what request, was that Carmen or Justin?
But that was for the, uh, summer camp.
Summer camp? So, uh, we would like to do 10,000 for the Boys and Girls Club of Montgomery and we can split it however y'all wanna split it.
I, I'll do two.
You'll do two, oh, okay.
From designated.
Yes, sir.
So it's two apiece.
Two apiece, is that okay with you, Commissioner Sankey, Boys Club, Girls Club?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, from designated, two apiece.
Any other additions?
While, while we're adding, if, if he's gonna do Alabama Dance Theater, do 2,500 from designated to ADT for me as well.
Thanks, Jess. She wanted 10,000.
Is that what she wanted?
Yeah.
Do 2,500 for me also, um, Kendall. And I gotta.
Thanks for staying on that, Dan.
Yeah, appreciate that one. Echo, did anyone get a text from Echo, from the little lady with Echo? It's Harris, uh-huh.
I already gave her.
You gave it?
She's in my district, I gave her $5,000.
Oh, okay.
But she still probably needs it now.
She does, she maybe does. Let me give her, send her, uh, do from, I demand, uh, $1,000 from Echo, for Echo.
Any other additions? All right. Consider travel and training requests for Commission, the DA, Revenue, Risk Management, Sheriff. All right. Item number one, Sheriff Cunningham. This is a waived rule item to consider master auto mechanic.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, y'all. Yeah, all right, there we go, yeah.
You got somebody there?
Huh?
You, you got, you got a mechanic?
Trying.
We got one. We got a hair real.
You got one?
Yeah, got him, uh, he came in, uh, yesterday, uh, outstanding. I mean, you just don't know, I told him, I said, I don't know where you been all my life, but I'm in love with you. So we got one.
I'm happy for you.
Well, you just don't know. I followed him around, I, I followed him home yesterday saying, hey, you still coming, ain't you? But that's what we're looking at, it, uh, I mean, he is, he's, uh, overly qualified and, uh, but, uh, his wife is, has got some illnesses and he just wanted to be able to come home and not work so much. So, uh, we're just glad to be able to get him.
How quickly can you get him if we approve everything?
Uh, we, yeah, we'll have him the next paper, he'll, he'll be at work.
Uh, I need a motion to waive rules on this.
I move.
Thank you.
Second.
On favor, signify by raising your right hand. Likewise opposed.
Uh, uh, good, I'll, also, since I'm up here, I, I at least wanna let y'all know, don't forget about, uh, Saturday, two o'clock, our Easter egg hunt out at AUM. And then on, uh, May the third, we'll be down at Reimer at the Old Dunbar School, uh, for our Deputy in the Park. Then May the seventeenth, we'll be at Elton Dean Park for Deputy in the Park. So, make sure you mark your calendars, come on out. Food, everything for the kids. We're gonna have some of those little jumpy houses for the kids. Uh, I know the probate judge said he'll be there, uh, so we'll have a, a lot of different people down there, but it'll be good for people to be able to come out and see you all. And also, uh, you can let, uh, everybody in your district know that we opened up our Carmen Moore Ziegler Scholarship. It went on website yesterday, so the applications are open, so we're gonna give out ten, uh, $1,000 scholarships, five for trade school and five for traditional college. So, uh, let everybody know they need to apply. Uh, deadline is May the thirtieth, so we can get those, uh, announcements made. With that being said, man, thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item number two, consider resolution regarding Project Tractor.
Shelby?
Thank you all for having me today, Shelby Stringfellow with the Montgomery Chamber of Commerce. Um, so what we have before us today is, uh, a question to the, to the Commission to waive rules on an item related to, um, a retention project for a, a longstanding company here, uh, in Montgomery founded in 1946. So they've been in this community for a very, very long time, probably almost as long as, uh, some of us have, uh, our families have been here. So, um, these guys, uh, as you all know, Alpha Mutual Insurance Corporation, they've been located on the Southern Boulevard for, uh, I think it's 70 years, something like that. They started out in a 40,000 square foot building. They've expanded over four times till right now there are over 500,000 square feet in that building. The reality of today is that a large portion of that building is underutilized. Um, they need to shrink, they need to relocate, um, and they're in an unfortunate, they were forced, uh, with an unfortunate decision to have to relocate to a ton, another, uh, another location. They looked at other opportunities, other options. Um, Montgomery came to the table and was able to retain this company here in Montgomery. We're very excited about being able to keep them. They currently have 660 jobs and annual payroll of above $50 million a year. So this agreement before you today is an agreement that, uh, is an agreement between the city, the county, and Alpha that allows them to stay here in Montgomery, allows the city and the county to have some input as to what they do with the existing facility on the Southern Boulevard and also gives Alpha clearance to move forward on a potential purchase on a building in East Montgomery. Any questions?
Is this, is this the waiver item that, you said this is a waiver item?
Correct, yes, sir.
The Project Tractor?
Project Tractor, that's right, Economic Development Project Tractor.
I know you came before us, uh, in an executive session to talk about this. Is there some type of financial commitment or obligation on the part of the county?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, that's right, yes, 2.4, uh, sorry, it is a total of 2.88 million uh, to be paid out over three different payments over a term of approximately two and a half years.
And I know we talked about, uh, the property out there and so forth and there was some different, uh, theories regarding why they wanted to move.
Correct.
And one of those theories was the social conditions. Uh, someone mentioned crime and so forth and so you also said that there was some guarantee perhaps that that property would be occupied at some point, it would sit there and continue to be a blight or sore eye to the city, but we don't have any way of actually, uh, confirming that commitment, uh, because it could sit there and in particular if we use the reasoning that it's crime that is causing them, the, the executive, the decision makers to have second, um, thoughts about remaining there, then why would anyone else want to come, uh, to occupy that building if those circumstances, uh, would continue to exist? So I am very much concerned about that and I'm also concerned about the dollar amount that you're, that we are asking the county to commit to this, particular as a waiver item. I don't think enough discussion has taken place, uh, at this point in time.
Can I address that, is that, is that allowed, Kendall?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, thank you, um, yes, uh, I think there has been some misinformation and some rumors about why, um, particular company is looking to relocate. As I mentioned, they're in 500,000 square feet, the building they're moving to is 200,000 square feet. And now that's just a market decision that they determined through a third party analysis. So really, carrying that extra 300,000 square feet is burdensome for them uh, and I think that's just a decision that they were told they had to make. Uh, with regards to the location and the guarantees, Alpha has committed to maintaining this property for a period of four years. Uh, they have to maintain it in the current condition that it's in, they have to ensure that it's in, in great market condition. They cannot let the, the assessed value of the building decline and they have agreed to work with us, the city, the county, the chamber to get a tenant in this building. They have been trying to market this building for some time as is. However, without a clear defined path to their next location, it's difficult for them to get a, uh, potential buyer or tenant to commit. But, uh, absolutely, they are committed to maintaining that property and get it sold and put it back into, uh, beneficial use for the community.
And, Mr. Chairman, I.
Yeah, please.
Is there, who's gonna provide the oversight, uh, as it relates to, you know, whether or not this property is occupied, whether or not it's continued to be maintained, uh, as it's sit there perhaps, uh, with no occupancy? Who's responsible for, uh, for making sure that that particular provision is carried out?
Yes, good, good question. So they've committed to maintaining it for four years. Uh, and so through the, through the, um, the annual review and assessment process, the county, the county tax assessor and property assessor will go out and assess the values of the properties. So that in typically on, on a structure like this, you have real property, you have personal property. So what we're concerned about right now is the real property, the building and the land. So, uh, when the company relocates to the new location, the tax assessor, uh, the appraiser is gonna go out to this facility, they're going to do a complete audit of the facility to make sure all that personal property is no longer in, in this location, is now in this location. And through that process, they will evaluate the entire interior and exterior of the existing building. And they will do that every four years. And as I mentioned, the agreement is that they maintain the building in a way that the assessed value does not change because the assessed value is what the tax revenue is attached to. Now, there are other outside market conditions that could just negatively impact the real estate market that are, that's beyond the company's control. But every year, this will be assessed, uh, through the tax, through the county appraisal's office. But then also they have, uh, annual reporting requirements in which they report to both the city and the county the current status of many things like including their employment and the number of jobs they have and the wages that they're paying.
Yes, sir. I, I just have a problem, um, you know, using the taxpayers' money to abandon one part of the city to go to a more affluent zip code, that, that just concerns me, it really does. And I understand the business aspect of it.
I understand your concern.
Yes, sir.
Shelby, let me ask you this question, they're not now, are they taking everyone from there? Are they leaving some of the employees, data center, some employee, some employee?
That's right, yes, yes, there's a portion of the building, as we've said, it's been expanded four times. There's a large data center component of the operations that's in the back part of the facility. Um, that will be maintained for a period of approximately five years in that location. So they're not going to, um, they're not going to completely uproot every bit of their investment they have in that particular location. Now, just keep in mind also, if need be, the data center portion can be kind of segmented away from the rest of the property if it needed to be sold or occupied while the data center remained. So that's a good point, yes, I think around 100 jobs will stay at that location.
How many jo, how many jobs in that, in that group and what's the average salary?
I don't, I don't have specific for the data center.
No, 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 in, for the whole, for the whole corporation.
Right now, they have 660 jobs associated with that particular physical address. The average current wage currently is $37.60 an hour currently, which comes out to about $51 million a year annual payroll here in Montgomery.
And then they're staying, um, I know Commissioner Sankey was just saying changing zip codes, but they're still staying in Montgomery County.
Correct, absolutely, that's, that's, and that's, that's a good point, uh, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Moore, yes. Um, that, uh, this agreement allows us to keep Alpha here in Montgomery as they did have other opportunities and other options before them to relocate to other, um, other communities outside of the city and the county. Uh, but this allows us to ensure that they stay here for generations to come. As we, as we've said, they've been here for, uh, I think 78 years, something like that, so, um, it's a, it's a, it's a good, it's a good way for us to ensure that this company stays in Montgomery and stays a part of Montgomery.
Shelby?
Yes, sir.
What, what's the recovery time on the two point, two point nine million?
The recovery time on what the commitments they have in place, um, is we've got them a little over three years. So I think it's like three and a quarter years, um, we, uh, we get a return on our investment.
So we get, we get the money back?
Correct, yes, sir, yes, sir, absolutely, yes.
By retaining them, we get it back.
Yeah, by retaining them, yes, sir. That's right, absolutely, we're retaining those 660 jobs, uh, they're staying in the community. Uh, and I forgot, I apologize, um, they're also going to invest an additional $58 million in the new property. So keep in mind, they'll still be paying avalorum taxes on the existing property and then they'll be paying avalorum taxes on the new property, they're going to be, uh, purchasing it and making improvements to at the new location. Plus, uh, you know, the additional, uh, personal property, office equipment, computers, those types of things.
And then you'll also have those employees still, some of these still remaining, staying, living in Montgomery and also buying right here in Montgomery, Alabama, so.
Absolutely, it, it was very important when Alpha went through this process, they wanted to displace as few employees as possible. So they really are excited about their opportunity, uh, to stay in Montgomery because it allows them to basically retain every single job they currently have.
One, one more question.
Sure.
And when, when we talk about, because I understand economic development, maybe not at the level that everyone else understands it, but when we talk about return on investment, I, I'm always interested in that and I, I was wondering if, and not to put our finance director on the spot, but I was wondering if, is there some way of actually measuring that and when you, uh, have your numbers, your spreadsheet and all, uh, to present to this body, is there some way to say, hey, yes, this is what, uh, we got from our investment to relocate Alpha? Is there some way to say, show me the numbers on the paper that say, yeah, here's three years from now, whether I'm here or not, somebody may be interested in it, to say, hey, this is what we really got, this is the return, I, I have it right here in black and white that we got, uh, as a result of that investment. Can you say that for certainty?
Can I address that? We do have an economic impact model that we do.
Shelby, speak a little louder.
Oh, sorry, uh, we do have an economic impact model that we run on this. That way we can calculate exactly what our return is and it is a conservative model, meaning that it's a, it estimates on the low end. Uh, we take into account everything, including the capital investment, the avalorum tax, every bit of it. All that's calculated in our model. Um, and actually, but we get the repayment of the, uh, of the, of the, of the amount in a little over three years. That's not including the avalorum tax from the old building. We're just looking at it from its own separate standalone project. So if we include the avalorum tax revenue, we'll be paid back in less than three years if we include that. But I look at it as a separate project, just, just to be fair to all the other projects we look at. Uh, but yes, there is a way that we do that and we use a model right now. That model, i- it assumes the 660 employees, it assumes the wages, it assumes a certain percentage of that coming back in sales tax revenues as well. Um, so absolutely, we calculate that number and it's a conservative number.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And there was, uh, there was competition, very stiff competition.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Uh, I know from one particular city that's very, fairly close, um, to us that would not have caused a complete upheaval of their workforce. Um, and Alpha chose to, they really want to stay here with us, so.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I understand all that and I'm, I'm, I'm supportive. I understand, I mean, I have a little heartburn, but I, I'm supportive of what we're talking here, but we don't usually do this. I mean, uh, this is a dangerous precedent. I mean, I've, uh, I've been here for a little while now and only once since I've been here has a company attempted this and I don't think we did, we, we, we did anything with them. We don't pay people to stay here. We don't want to set that precedence, really. So, but I'm willing to allow, to support this one. But this is not something I want to see coming before us on a regular basis. You know, if you want to leave, go on. You know, but don't come here asking us to pay you to stay. I mean, I don't know how many of those employees live in Montgomery. You know, I'm not gonna ask that question. But I'm, I'm gonna say this, that, uh, I, I will, I will support this one. Uh, but the message to the others who are thinking that they can come here and say, we gonna leave if you don't pay us, leave.
Commissioners, that's been my biggest concern too, and I, I've expressed that to uh, the chamber and everybody else too, that, uh, that, that's been a big concern of mine.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Harris brought up a good point, um, we, we don't know how many of the employees actually reside in Montgomery and I think what we've done in the past, um, we've actually helped sustain jobs uh, for people who don't live or work in Montgomery. And that has concerned me, uh, for a number of years, uh, just the process that we, we have here in terms of incentivizing jobs, but we really never asked a question of how many people actually reside in Montgomery. So that is another, uh, issue that I have with these type of procedures. The city of Montgomery is on board with this. We find that out tonight. Did, was the city of Montgomery supposed to be part of this?
Correct, yeah, this is a shared agreement between the county and the city.
And have they already, uh, committed?
They will, they will meet on this same issue today at, uh, five o'clock.
And I suppose there'll be some more discussion from that body.
I would expect so, yes, sir.
Why is it have, why does it have to be a waiver?
Pardon?
Why does it have to be waiver? That's what I, I don't quite understand the urgency.
The waiver rule request was made because our original schedule to get this, um, to move this forward was offset by some other conditions associated with moving this process forward. For example, um, not the Commission's fault, but the Commission had a rescheduling of their meeting when they were out of town and that, that upset our regular scheduled process. Um, there are several moving parts, just want to make sure we are all aware that, um, uh, if this agreement is adopted by the city and the county, um, there's still a lot of moving parts, for example, the purchase of the new property, getting those agreements in place. Um, it's not a done deal per se, uh, just because, um, just because this gets approved today, they still have to, uh, execute and perform on their side of things. So there's a schedule that they have to meet that's being put on them by other parties that are unrelated.
Yes, sir, thank, thank you for your patience under, see, Ms. Anna Buckaloo, she stood up. I was wondering if she had anything to add to the conversation.
Can I also add, uh, uh, Commissioner Sankey, to your point, as far as not having enough discussion, there is a public meeting immediately following. there is a public meeting immediately following this session on this particular issue, just for your information.
Public meeting?
On this, on this particular reservation item, yes, sir.
As part of the proceedings of this meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Just for your information, if you had some concerns about having timing to discuss thoroughly, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Anna, do you, you want to add to that, please?
Just, uh, some of, um, this I will cover when I brief the commission here in just a few minutes. But I did want to say, all, the thoughtful discussion is much appreciated. Uh, this is an impactful decision, um, but it's also a very impactful investment, um, in Montgomery in terms of, when I, some of the numbers I'll share with you this morning. Last year, uh, we were, I think, fourth in the state in terms of net new jobs created, five hundred some odd jobs. This one project is six hundred and sixty some odd jobs. So, we looked at it, much like you, through a lens of being, you know, looking carefully at the projects we look at, but this came to us not as sort of a hometown presence, but really a very professionally done site selection process. They had a very, um, world-renowned site selection team. They looked at various sites. We were in competition, not only outside the state, but within the state and within the region. Um, a lot of their workforce, um, I heard the discussion about zip codes. It's really about keeping them in Montgomery County, uh, the sales tax impact, the avalorum impacts, all the impacts of their tax receipts that will impact the county's tax rolls and the cities for many years. It's, the question about employment is also a valid question. Um, you could make that argument about every single company you have anywhere. Um, you know, people live in metropolitan areas, and we've looked at that data and can bring that back to y'all, kind of show you. Um, some of the things also I'll talk to you about are the things like the whitewater that you are investing in and the quality of life of this community. That is how we make residents want to live here, work here, and live here. So, it's really about a comprehensive approach to economic development, and I, I think that this is very good discussion this morning. I will tell you that the company is anxious to make a decision and move forward, uh, and they appreciate your consideration of this. And we look at it very much as we're still in competition for the project, and they've been a longstanding investor in the capital city. They are leading and sole corporate headquarters, uh, that has as high profile as they do, uh, throughout the country, and that brings with it also, uh, benefits for Montgomery County and the city of Montgomery. So, appreciate your consideration this morning.
Do I have a motion to waive rules?
Move that we waive rules.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor, signify.
Ms. Chairman, forgive my interruption, please. We're waiving rules before the public discussion.
We're waiving rules to put it on today's agenda, which means that we'll vote after the public discussion. It's just to get it on today's agenda.
Okay.
So, we have a motion, we have a second. On favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay. So, waive rules, we will move that to the formal session.
Item number three, consider agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation concerning funding for resurfacing Wallahatchee Road from Pike Road to State Route one-ten, four point five-six miles.
That's gas tax money, so, any questions about that? That'd be next agenda.
Item number four, consider renewal of lease agreement with Williamson Properties Limited for purchase of clay gravel.
This is in the, uh, Engineers Department budget. Any questions? No increase in the usual twenty-five-hundred lump sum payment? That'd be next agenda.
Item number five, consider amendment number two to contract, um, for diversified companies LLC doing business as DiveCo Data, um, Revenue Commission.
That's Allison Holland, uh, contract was coordinated with Allison, uh, all of the contract provisions remain the same. Is there any questions? That'd be next agenda.
Item number six, consider budget change request number two.
Any questions? That'd be next agenda.
Item number seven, consider twenty-twenty-five transportation alternatives program, State Tap, grant application.
There is a twenty percent match on this grant application?
That will be part of the twenty-twenty-six budget.
Next agenda.
Item number eight, consider bid award for the construction of a storm shelter at the Flatwood Community Center. Um, really quickly, there was a bid, uh, bid opening held on March thirty-first. One bidder attended. That bidder was Safety Shelter, which parent company is Aquamarine Industries. Because there was only one bidder, we are in a position to negotiate. Mr. Allen is not here today, but I have instructed Mr. Allen, um, to work through with Safety Shelter to negotiate to bring that price down. The price, uh, bidded was one hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. We'd like to see if we can get that down a little bit. Um, once we can get that down, hopefully by the next agenda, you will have a, um, a lower bid in front of you, and we can go ahead and get started on that project. These are, this is being paid for out of, uh, Commissioner Sankey's ARPA dollars.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kendall.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Anderson, rather. The, the pad.
Yes, sir.
That's, um, sheltered to sit on. Are we satisfied that the pad has been constructed and designed to withstand the weight of this shelter?
Yes, sir. I have a geotechnical inspection that I need to send you, but I have one that, that verifies that it is structurally sound. Uh, the dirt is compacted in a way that is structurally sound to hold the concrete once it's put in place and will event, eventually hold the, uh, shelter. So, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way to get a, a breakdown of what the, the quote is actually for? It, it looks like it's a prefab unit plus installation. Um, if there's a way to see what we're paying for the unit itself, that'd give us an opportunity to compare across the industry and then installation, obviously, but.
Yes, sir. I can get you that information. We were somewhere in the, the quotes that I, we received were in the one-twenty range, one-fifteen, one-twenty range, so it's a little, it's a little bit up, but I think, I think we can shave it down and get it back in that one-twenty range, hopefully.
Back when the storm hit, you could buy them for a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it was, it was one, it was by one-ten, one-fifteen at that time, yes, sir.
I'd just like to get it up before the next severe weather condition, which we have no way of knowing that, of course.
Yes, sir. We'll do our best.
Maybe we ought to do it today, then.
If I had it, I'd do it.
I'll be talking to them in a few minutes. I'll tell them, I'll tell them to wait.
Item number nine, discuss board member reappointment to the Montgomery Area Mental Health Authority. Um, last, last meeting, we asked that this be, um, looked at.
Kendall, going back to number eight.
Okay.
We're gonna have that, uh, negotiations talk with the, the bidder before our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
So, that'd be next agenda then.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Item number nine, uh, Commissioner Harris, you had Erica Smith?
Oh, yeah, um, I think, uh, Commissioner Sankey has a nominee for that position.
Yes, sir. Can I just confirm with her, in terms of her schedule, do I, do we have time for that, or should I?
Just send it to me. Once you confirm, if you'll go ahead and send that, per, that nominee to me, we'll put it on the next agenda.
She, she's, uh, very, very qualified. She has, uh, actually, uh, a doctorate degree, uh, in, uh, psychiatric nursing. She's a psychiatric, psychiatric nurse practitioner, uh, with many years of experience, uh, in that, uh, in that area. I think she'll be a great, great candidate.
As soon as you confirm a schedule, you get it to me, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Item number ten, discuss board member appointments to the city-county public library board. There are two vacant seats and one person that, um, expir, term expires in, um, June. Thank Commissioner Harris, Janelle Bell Hay, Haynes was your appointment, her term expires in June.
I have to talk to her, I'm sure she gonna want to stay on there.
Okay, but the other two seats are currently vacant.
Kendall, on Betsy Atkins', uh, seat, uh, I believe I have somebody, but I'm, I'm hoping they would text me and confirm before now, but, um, by next meeting, I'll have that name.
All right. And lastly, it's not listed, but.
We need somebody to replace Phil Johnson too, though.
Yes, so.
I think I may have somebody else. Can I give it to you, though?
Yes.
Next. I'll get it to you.
And also, it's not listed on here, but we still need that third person for the, uh, Montgomery County Human Resources Appeals and Grievances Committee, well, board. So, please get me, I will remind you guys, and please get me those, uh, as soon as possible. Item number eleven, letter from Senior Vice President of Economic Development, Shelby Stringfellow, with the Montgomery Chamber of Commerce regarding an executive session concerning a commerce or trade matter.
We're going, yeah, I need to have a motion to move into executive session. We're gonna try to do that now, between, uh, now and ten o'clock. Shelby said he thinks we can. Have a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, we'll move into executive session, and we'll be back before ten o'clock.